I'm good to go Brendan? Okay. Good evening everyone, it is June 4th. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting one of the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners at 7:05. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Please stand for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Secretary Savage, could you please do your roll call?
Commissioner Tuckey.
Here.
Commissioner Zubek.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Vice President Steele.
Here.
President Ellis.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This floor did have an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss personnel matters. We're up to item six, visitors requesting comments. If you have comments, please come forward, state your name and address, as well as write them down for record-keeping purposes. And you may begin. There will only do visitors requesting comments for about 30 minutes and then we'll move on to agenda items. And there'll be a second opportunity to speak prior to the conclusion of the meeting.
Three things. First, I want to thank the Tasty Cake Man for the donation of the snacks that are out there tonight. Second...
Ms. Knowles, could you do your name and address?
Oh, Deborah Knowles at 608 Enoch Drive, Harrisburg, PA 17111. Thank you. Shayla, have you heard anything back from the Attorney General on the Bressler Firehouse investigation you promised to check into?
I actually just sent the email this evening, so no, I have not.
Okay. At the last meeting, Shayla, you did another public disservice by falsely accusing Commissioner Tuckey and Commissioner Zubek of sending around a negative political flyer about your family.
This was for you, Ben, when you're done.
It is sad what happened to your family, but using that to falsely accuse your opponents is low. Of course, your father finally did the research after Election Day and announced in a Dolphin County Commissioners meeting that State Representative Tom McAfee was the one responsible for sending it out. And you failed then to publicly admit that Matt and Christine were telling the truth. I filed an Ethics Commission complaint because I do not appreciate having to listen to political campaigning telling me who not to vote for in my public township meeting. If I wanted to hear this type of thing, I would have attended a public rally. Also, did you apologize to both of them for the false accusation? Of course not. We who know you know that you would never apologize when you're wrong. I'm so glad that enough of us attended this meeting or saw it online...
This is the document that she's referring to.
We knew you were lying and it backfired.
Right.
That we showed out in force to make sure that Matt and Christine will make it on the ballot in November. I'm tired of your false accusations and the lives that you damaged by making them, but of course you don't seem to care. I'm looking forward to when you falsely accuse the wrong person and have to pay. And I want it known that I do not want my taxpayer money to be used to defend you.
I'm gonna go ahead and respond. Ms. Knowles, you can have this document. This is the court custody case since the two commissioners sitting up here decided to use my brother and make a spectacle of it. I printed out some copies of the case. This is the document. This is the page. Here's a citation. It's from the Prithonitaries Office. Nothing I said was inaccurate. I have the documents. They're available online.
So are you saying that your father lied that when he said that Tom McAfee sent it?
I stated who paid for it.
They didn't send it out.
Right, their face was on it. It was in support of them.
So someone else was in support of them?
Yes, Dolphin County Leadership Pack.
No, that doesn't work.
Yep, there was a letter that was sent out also by the Dolphin County Leadership Pack on their behalf that was from former Township Commissioners. And on their campaign page, they posted that and touted that as something that was positive, but then when it comes to this mailer that's also from the same pack, they pretend as if they had nothing to do with it. It doesn't work like that. I don't think the public is that stupid to believe that they had nothing to do with it when one from the same pack was positive and one from the same pack was not. So I have the documents here for anyone that's interested in reading it and you can understand why it was so atrocious for that information to be included on that flyer. You can read what my brother was struggling with, what his mom was struggling with. Right here, I got three copies. I'll make more. Anyone can have it. Go ahead and read through it so you can know what actually was going on in 2010 when my brother was 15 years old. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments? You can come and read the documents, sir. Right, if you're not interested, then please, please keep the comments to a minimum unless you're coming up here to speak.
Wow.
Yeah.
Reading the speech?
Right, and again, I'll address that too with the speech that I gave at the end of the meeting. The Constitution is protected speech, so if it applies to you, it applies to me.
So I can say to Democrats...
Where it's not your turn to speak, you can come up and say whatever you'd like.
Deb Harvey, 105 South 47th Street. Commissioner Connolly, I'll address you this evening. I watched the Dolphin County Commissioners meeting this morning, as I usually do. I watched as you once again spoke during public comments. Over the past several months, I've watched you, a sitting Swatara Township Board member, again make unfounded accusations against other political figures. You go up there, you speak, you don't have any validation for it. I never see you carry any documentation. I never see any proof. So, you know, today I had to watch you and your level of accusations of corruption against your fellow township supervisors, Christine and Mike. Without any proof again of truth or documentation to prove your accusations of their corruption. So we'd like to see some, you know, documentation very soon on that. I thought that, and I've felt this for a while, a sitting Swatara Township Commissioner going into Dolphin County and every single meeting, you go up front and you criticize another politician. It's very embarrassing for us. If you have proof, then please, by all means, we don't want corruption anywhere, so show us, you know, make it visible to us. I feel like it's disgusting displays of your own professionalism that I've seen you make a lot of times. Even on Facebook, you call me names, which I don't care. You want to call me Karen? Okay, I'm Karen. You look like a man who's unraveling because our residents are wide-open eyes now and we're all watching and I think that frightens you. That's all I have to say tonight.
While you're up there, I did not speak today at the Dolphin County Commissioners meeting.
You did.
I did not.
What day was that?
I spoke today at the election board meeting.
Okay, excuse me, election board. I watched them all.
So number one, right, but when I left, so I don't know what happened at the Dolphin Counties Commissioners meeting because I left.
Okay. I still connected on the meeting.
But if you watched, I was asked about an email that I sent to them and things I said last week. And if you followed the comments from the Director of Elections, what I said after being reviewed is now being turned over to the District Attorney's Office. So it wasn't refuted. Since last week, additional information was added to the website and I cited 30 documents in the email which were the proof. The reason I didn't send it to you is because you had nothing to do with it and I didn't...
What is the proof?
I'll send you the same email if you request it.
Please, I'd like to know. I'd like to know. It just doesn't look very professional for you.
No, so you didn't know what it was and you came up and said it didn't exist it and now I'm saying I'll send it to you.
I said you provided none, so how do I know if it does?
But I provided it in a public meeting.
Besides which?
And I would pride you.
I'm here to defend these commissioners who just re-won their seats by a lot of votes. That's why you have me really upset. You constantly put down other people, you know, you don't have any proof of anything, but you still want to get it out there for the whole county, you know? That's just not right. It's unethical is what it is. So call it what you want. If you have documentation, put it out to us so we can say, oh, you know, Commissioner Connolly was right.
So when you came up and you said you didn't have proof, and now that I said I have proof, now you're just saying you didn't like it?
Do you have proof?
Sure.
Because I do too of not being corrupt, so...
Then you probably should have been at the election board meeting to counter what I was saying.
I can't make those meetings, but I do watch all the meetings.
But I did not speak at the Dolphin County Commissioners meeting.
I just said I had my meetings mixed up. I do apologize. When I'm wrong, I do apologize, but I did watch you do that, so you can't say you didn't do it.
Well, I definitely did it at the election board meeting.
Yeah, all right. So unless, you know, you have anything else you wanted to say to me tonight? Like apologize to me?
No, I wouldn't have really said anything had you stated correctly what we're starting to say, but I do appreciate it.
You'd rather do it on Facebook and make people try to look really bad. Nice.
Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time? Are you coming up, sir?
Yeah, I'm like... I should just get a stamp.
Just write your name, put an arrow for the address. I'll write it again.
Gary Harvey, 105 South 47th Street. So at the last meeting when you made the comment that you made about them sending out the mailers about your brother, you also made a comment that you would vote for anybody but those two.
That's what I said, to be accurate, is that the public has a choice. They can vote for those two or anyone else. That's almost verbatim what I said. I have them written down. It's recorded. It's public.
Yeah, it's recorded, so we'll look at it. So how would you feel if I came up here and said in November, I would vote for anybody except for the Democrats?
I would not feel a thing, frankly. I would not feel a thing because you have the right to say that.
Okay, but I think you as a sitting commissioner shouldn't have made that comment.
That's fine, you're entitled to your opinion, but as a citizen of the United States, the Constitution dictates freedom of speech, so I can say what I want and I will. And also, back to proof and things like that, which I know these weren't your comments, but they were your wife's comments, I've provided documentation and you still don't believe information, so I don't know what proof would be sustainable or acceptable to people that choose not to believe things even when it's provided. I have the documents right here that support exactly what I said. You can come and take them and read them. I've made that offer numerous times and then what happens is no one comes and reads them and then you continue saying that there was no proof, so...
Okay, so what you're saying is if the Democratic Party puts out a mailer, you would have to say in what goes in that mailer?
I have them written down. It's recorded. It's public.
Yeah, it's recorded. So we'll look at it. So how would you feel if I came up here and said, in November, I would vote for anybody except for the Democrats?
I would not feel a thing, frankly. I would not feel a thing because you have the right to say that.
Okay, but I think you as a sitting commissioner shouldn't have made that comment.
That's fine. You're entitled to your opinion. But as a citizen of the United States, the Constitution dictates freedom of speech. So I can say what I want and I will. Um, and also back to proof and things like that, which I know these weren't your comments, but they were your wife's comments. I've provided documentation and you still don't believe information. So it, I, I don't know what proof would be sus- sustainable or acceptable to people that choose not to believe things even when it's provided. I have the documents right here that support exactly what I said. You can come and take them and read them. I've made that offer numerous times. And then what happens is no one comes and reads them. And then you continue saying that there was no proof. So.
Okay, so what you're saying is if the Democratic Party puts out a mailer, you would have the say in what goes in that mailer?
I don't have a PAC that has $26,000 supporting me to send things out on my behalf.
Well, whose fault's that? Maybe the Democratic Party ought to step up a little bit and get a PAC and support you.
I'm perfectly content with the amount of funds that I've received. It's ridiculous that that amount of money is needed to spend. Um, the, the, I, I spent, what, $600 with my election and received 3,000 from a PAC that supported lots of Democratic candidates. So it's, it's a lot of money that, as was stated, most likely came from, uh, Tom McCaffey. Uh, and there are lots of contracts and things like that that make it lucrative for, for them to spend the money. So I, I, I have no interest in that. So no, absolutely not.
Well, maybe the Democratic Party ought to look into, into a PAC where they can help.
There are three Democrats sitting up here. We were elected with very minimal of our own, our own dollars, actually. So yeah, complete control over what is sent out, absolutely. Would never have someone send something that vile out on my behalf and not say in public that that was horrible and that I think that that should never have happened and apologize. So that's, that's.
So you're saying they had, you're saying they had a say in what was put into there? You have proof of that?
Uh, no. I don't have documented proof. The only proof again that I have is what I stated is that the letter that was sent out on their behalf from the same PAC that had numerous former Republican Commissioners' names on it, they posted on their campaign page and touted it as something positive. But now, again, from this information from the same PAC, you're saying now we don't have anything to do with that? If, if you were okay with the letter that went out on your behalf and something went out with your face on it, how, how do you not, and the PAC gave you $26,000 in the previous election cycle? I don't know how you can say and, and full-heartedly or whole-heartedly believe that that had nothing to do with them and they didn't know about it. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, I.
Someone's giving you $26,000 and you don't know what they're sending out on your behalf? Doesn't make sense.
I, I take their word for it if they say they didn't know what was going on.
You're entitled to do so.
And just like you're entitled to say they did.
No, I don't know that. I absolutely don't know that. I do not know that. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments? All right. Moving on to item seven, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Do we have any discussion?
Yeah. Did you announce the executive session?
I did. Yes.
She said it was a.
Personnel matters. Yes, I did. Thank you, though. Do we have any further discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're up to motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Keep a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, actually I have a question on C. Um, is the individual on C, Deb Miller, is she receiving a demotion?
No.
It's not a demotion?
No.
Okay, so she's going from doing payroll and things like that to front desk clerk? That's not a demotion?
No.
Okay, so what, what is she gonna be doing?
I believe you have the document that has the job description.
For the public certification, what is she gonna be doing?
Right. I'm not gonna discuss personnel matters.
So you're not allowed to tell the public what a public employee is getting paid public dollars is doing?
In public. I've said that numerous times.
All right. Well, I think it is a demotion and I think it's sad that you've taken a position of person that's been here for well over 30 years out of their job that they've done for well over 30 years. And you've made them the equivalent of the receptionist. And it says here pending an exec, that she would be answering to whatever executive assistant you hire. I think it's disgraceful. I think it, it, it shows the character of the majority of this board to treat, continuously treat staff that way. And I'm a no on C.
Would you like us?
I would like to be recorded as a no on C.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion?
Yeah, um, not to repeat what Commissioner Zubek said, but I'm in agreement with what she just stated. Deb Miller's been here for almost 40 years, I believe. And from my understanding, there's no blemish on her record. She's been doing a great job for years. She takes care of payroll and benefits. And this, this just doesn't make any sense at all to me.
Hmm, the comment that you just made don't make any sense. Uh, benefits are strictly online. We discussed that last year of moving benefits uh, strictly online where it would be through the new payroll system and she doesn't handle.
When there was issues with employees, who did they go to? Deb, that's who they went to. That's who they've been going to from my understanding. And I just think what this board is doing is just not proper. So.
Our, our broker is the mediator between the insurance company and the employees now that's been since we all unanimously agreed to the new insurance company. And, uh, since our benefits went online, um, our broker's been handling all the benefits and, uh, that's the way we set it up with AFME and also the police union. So she hasn't handled, uh, those benefits. Uh.
So, so why is she getting taken off of payroll?
We have a payroll service.
Um, if, 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 if you wanna discuss, um, the details of the position, um, I think some of the issues that arise with the previous position could be discussed in executive session because it is a personal matter. But, um, if you wanna put it out to the public, you're, you're more than welcome. But, um, I think she does a fine job at what she's doing now. And she also has, uh, handled other things as far as utility billing, um, street cut permits. Um, I think, uh, what's the other thing? Compost. I think she's, she's doing well. And that's, uh, where she's actually likes the public. So I don't, I don't understand where it has come from. And essentially, we no longer have a front desk clerk and everyone else is tied up. There's no one else to fulfill that role. So I mean, if you can recommend, if, if, can you, can you, can you, um,
The description in your packet.
If you can recommend someone else to take that position.
You said he couldn't talk about it, but now he's describing it. I have a question.
What I said is I'm not going to.
If you have someone else that can.
Just putting the payroll information together to have some.
If you can have someone, uh, payrolls clock in, clock out. That's, that's another thing that went electronic that went away from Excel spreadsheets that we talked about for, uh, I think it was almost a year and a half until we switched over, um, to the new payroll system. Um, it's been a year and a half and we've, we've been on the new payroll system probably for about four or five payroll cycles where the employees clock in and clock out. There's no more Excel spreadsheet. So that Excel spreadsheet that was normally done before no longer needs to be done. At, at, at some point, um, at, at some point, we, we, we have to pay attention to the business that's transgressing up here as, as, as we, as we debate these things and, and the public. Uh, and, and I understand that there's gonna be questions that, uh, may arise from time to time about specific things, but.
I think it's, I think it's perfectly, um, fine to go electronic, but she still was a staff member that looked into benefit questions. She, people don't wanna have to call. There, everybody has a benefits manager. Everybody has somebody that they can go to to ask questions. For you to sit there and say just because you want electronic, that you don't need somebody to actually do a job and answer questions and assist staff when they have benefits questions, it's just, it's, it's ridiculous and it's just making excuses. And someone else is obviously doing payroll, even though it's electronic, you still have a person doing payroll. So to sit up here and to try to pull the wool over everyone's eyes and say that there's still not a person that's needed for that position, you know it's wrong.
If an employee needs to speak to a staff member, uh, and they don't wanna talk.
Away. You've taken everybody away. They have no one they go to. The residents don't even know who to go to. And we still, after a year and a half, don't even have a township manager that we are required to have. It's in our ordinances and you won't even follow our township ordinances. You have no problem going after residents when they don't follow the ordinances. But you yourselves are setting a poor example. And there's a, a, a process in our ordinances that lays out what to do in the absence of a township manager and an assistant manager. Yet for a year and a half, you have the sit, the nerve to sit up here and talk about justice and that you wanna, that, that here's the document. It's in our ordinances. You haven't even read them. Where's the justice there? You're a disgrace.
Um, I have discussion. I just wanna add one more comment if I can. Um, so if, if, if you need something outside the broker, um, that is an HR function as well, uh, with, with benefits coordination. Just so we're all on the same page as that. And, and we did agree to hire an HR manager. I, I.
How about a manager? Maybe you should fill that position.
Um, actually, um.
So you're not doing the day-to-day operations?
At the behest of the other commissioners, um, that is actually in the process and HR has already posted it. Um, and they're getting resumes.
Well, but that's not the process, Commissioner Steele.
That is the process.
No, no, the process is laid out in section 48 dash six of our township ordinances where it states that this board yearly, a year and a half ago, was supposed to appoint somebody to fulfill that position until it was permanently filled. We were to have an acting township manager for the last year and a half that you decided to ignore the law because it wasn't convenient for you.
Okay. Who, who do you want to be the acting township manager?
I would like you to do your job as Personnel Chair and go find someone and bring it to this board so that we can appoint somebody in an acting capacity as per our township ordinances.
Just so we're clear, um, the board unanimously instructed that we go after township manager.
The board didn't do that.
And I just, I.
The board, the board should follow the ordinances.
I just.
I asked the, the solicitor if it, if it was inappropriate for this board not to be following the ordinances. And you know what his exact words were? Well, it's advisable that they should follow the ordinances, but there's no penalty. Should we tell the rest of the residents in our township that there's no penalty if they ignore the ordinances? That is absolutely ridiculous for a solicitor to sit there and say that we can ignore our own ordinances. And you did say that, sir, and I have a copy of the video.
Yeah, you're exactly right. That's what I said. But other ordinances, for example, code enforcement do provide specific penalties for non-compliant.
Yes, but your job is to make sure that we're not subject to legal challenge. And anybody sitting in this audience can come, can, can file a complaint that we're not following our own ordinances.
There is no penalty in your ordinance for not having a manager.
There's, there's no penalties laid anywhere.
It is advisable that you should do that. I can say that every meeting until it happens, but you all have to make that decision.
You're not, you're not doing your job. Your job is to say, I'm advising you to do this or else there are penalties. Somebody can sue. Somebody can say, you know what, you're not following your ordinances. I'm gonna file a lawsuit against you. His job is to make sure that we're not open to liability.
There is no liability for not having a manager according to your own ordinance. If somebody would like to file a lawsuit about that, they can. It's not going to go anywhere. I will state again.
You're so good at your job when it comes to us paying to defend us in court.
I will state again, you should all find a manager. That is your job to do, not mine. Thank you.
Well, I really don't want to pay you to defend us in court when we can actually follow the ordinances that we're supposed to follow on a daily basis. I really don't think that obviously there's some reason why our solicitor only answers to three people on this board. But we have a duty to follow the township ordinances that are laid out.
Okay. I think you've made your point.
Oh, I have made my point.
Yeah, I think you've made your point.
I'm gonna, uh, have some discussion on, uh, 8C. Um, I'm in favor of reassigning this person because she's a good person, because she did a great job and that we can keep her here. The job duties that she performed really aren't there for her to do. Um, she has been filling in in this position off and on, and I think she does a good job. Um, this, this township is not looking to get rid of the person at all or demote the person. She has a set of skills that, um, will greatly benefit i- in the spot where we have an opening because a person left. So we have duties that she can perform, that she's capable of doing. And, um, we get the benefit of, you know, keep, keeping her here. Uh, the, the other two functions that you stated that she did, she, she did them. She did them in the past. Um, but things, things have changed and they're performed, um, in other ways and, and they're still, they're still performed. But, um, probably the, you know, one of the, the biggest factors was the round of, um, contracts that we did. The bulk of our employees, um, recently signed a contract and, and there, there were some changes and, and I don't wanna get too deep into it. But they were, there was, there was modernization, um, of, of some aspects of, uh, HR duties. And, um, again, so I will be voting for that. And, uh, you had brought up, uh, at a recent meeting that we should be looking for a manager, which is the second time, the second time, if not the third,
You should also follow the ordinance.
That we posted this, and, and I'm gonna explain something to the public. Um, coming into '24, we had a lot more staff than what we could pay. Now, we could have paid them by asking you for more money, but we didn't. We didn't raise taxes. We had to let go some staff. Um, some, some that, you know, if not all, did, 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 did good jobs. Um, the, the manager has not been a year and a half, uh, since the manager left. And we are looking for a manager. We are now coming up on 18 months since the three Democrats were elected. The two Republicans were on the board. The five of us are working on a process. But we didn't have the money to pay everybody, um, based on the budget that, that we were given. Uh, there was more spending in the budget than there was revenue. Uh, everyone knows we opened the budget, we cut, we cut the revenue. Uh, or we cut the, the spending to match the revenue. And, um, you know, we, it's not a secret that we, we struggled in some personnel spots and people stepped up and did extra duties to save the people in the audience and us as residents money. So it's easy to constantly say we should have more employees and we should have more staff and they should be specialized and only do this function or that function. But we really can't afford that because we need a versatile staff that can perform lots of, of functions. Um, Commissioner Steele is the Chair of Personnel, um, the Co-Chair of Finance with him. And we're looking at moving forward and filling, um, positions. I think we're on the verge of actually having an all-time high in police officers with the most recent, um, group of three. So as the spending becomes under control and the revenue matches the spending and we don't have to raise the taxes on our residents, we're, we're getting, um, more and more service for those residents. And this is just one of those moves. I, I know it's personal when you see somebody's name and you know that the person used to do something and she's your friend. But she's my friend too. And I think it's personal that I, that I wanna keep her, um, working here with the skills that she has. And I think that that's an excellent position for her. Um, and I've seen her doing it and she does a good job. So. I'm sorry if I went on too long, but that's my.
We're gonna let Commissioner Tucky speak.
Yeah. So you're telling me there's no one that does anything with payroll in this building? It all just goes electronically. There's no one to have involved with payroll at all? Someone doesn't punch out on the computer, write or do something. You're telling me no one is in here doing anything for that job? Okay, thank you. Um, but beginning of '24, within three days, the majority of this board fired three people. Three decent staff people that were doing a really good job. Um, yeah, that was without board approval. Moving forward, I, I mean, you talk about cost savings, cost sharing. I'm concerned about the money. Where, where's it coming from? The sewer authority? I'm concerned there's more going out of that than what should be. There's a, there's a lot going on in this place. It's just getting frustrating. It's not because I don't know and I don't pay attention. There's a lot of issues in our township right now. And it's just disingenuous with how these meetings go and with what's being set up here. I, uh, all these accusations getting tossed out. Look, I follow the rules. I know Commissioner Zubek follows the rules. We, we're not doing anything we're not supposed to do. We treat people with respect. We always have. I'm seriously just tired of the accusations and all the BS. I really am. And when it comes to certain staff members, what I'm saying was correct and is correct. When there's benefit problems, there's still a lot of employees I know go to Deb to try to help. I, you can call a hotline. You can call whatever you want. There's still people that want to have someone to be able to go to. And you just mentioned HR. A lot of the issues that I personally have is we're left out of almost, and I know you're gonna dispute it, but it's true. We're left out of almost everything involved with what's going on. And I try to make sure that I'm informed when it comes time, that we get these agendas the night before and make sure that we're on top of everything before we vote on something. I do my absolute best and it's not because I don't understand or I can't read. That's not it at all. I know what I'm talking about. I know what I've been saying is true. And all these accusations that came out. And all these accusations that came out towards myself and Commissioner Zubek is just wrong.
It's political.
But I'm, I'm.
For me, it's personal, frankly. For me, it's personal.
Nothing was, everyone has respect for your family and your loss.
Disrespecting my brother shouldn't be political. Disrespecting my brother's memory.
I did nothing of sorts.
And for people that are here that don't know this, that weren't watching this, my brother died in twenty-twenty. They sent out information from a custody case for my brother from two thousand and ten to get people to vote for them. This cycle in an election that I'm not in.
Political. That's all you are is political.
Right.
It's all sour grapes. You're sore losers.
Right.
I'd like to finish my comments, please. Like I was trying to say, I'm not disrespectful. I know Commissioner Zubek is not. We're not heartless. What was put in those mailers, we had nothing to do with. That is the honest God truth. What was stated in those mailers was not mentioning issues with your brother.
You can go with your fake, with your fake information that you're giving out, like it's actually something.
This is, this is, yeah, you can give me a copy. I know.
She always has like a, a paper she wants to give you to say she's got documentation.
Okay, listen, the, the mailer did not.
It's a perfect narrative. Oh, look at the documentation.
The mailer did not say anything about that particular issue you brought up at the last meeting. I have no disrespect for you. I treated you nothing.
Madam President, point of order.
Excuse me, no.
Point of order, Madam President.
Excuse me, let me speak.
Roberts rules of order when I call point of order. Um, the floor, the floor gets quiet. It goes back to the chair. Um, po- point of order and Madam President, why I'm calling point of, why I'm calling point of order is.
We'll move on.
Um, these items are on the consent agenda and when items are on the consent agenda, they do not require discussion. If the, any commissioner wants to pull one item off, they have that right. So I, I ask that we call for the vote and because we're, we're not in discussion of the motion.
I'm voting no on C.
Um, Secretary Savage, could you do a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Tuckey.
Yeah, um, yes on A and B and no on C.
Commissioner Zubek?
Yes on A and B and no on C.
Commissioner Connolly?
Uh, yes on all three.
Vice President Steele?
Yes.
President Ellis?
Yes.
We're up to item nine, consideration of minutes. We have the regular meeting, one minutes of May, uh, May seventh, as well as May fourteenth, the second meeting.
Make a motion for both.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Um, I'm still looking through these.
They're on the other side at the back.
Yeah, I'm fine.
So no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those are approved. We're up to item ten, building and codes plan.
Motion for ten A through J, subject to satisfaction of town, all township requirements.
Second.
Um, for the public, Zach, if you just do a brief overview of all of it. Um, to my knowledge, there's only one that isn't going to zero. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so items H and I are kinda combined. It's the same, uh, property owner. Uh, just very, very briefly, uh, one oh one North Sixty-second Street is for a single-family dwelling, stormwater management. Uh, four hundred Margate Road, single-family dwelling, stormwater management. Nine sixty-five Orchard Drive, single-family dwelling, stormwater management. Ortiz Property, seven fifty-one Paxton Road, another single-family dwelling, stormwater management, release. Uh, the seventy-five forty-one Chambers Hill Road is for a pole barn, stormwater management. Eighteen twenty-one South Nineteenth Street, it was a code compliance case for stormwater management issues. Tourniquet forty-two oh one Chambers Hill Road is for a parking lot in the building addition, stormwater management. In the seventy-eight forty-one, seventy-nine oh one Whitmer Drive, building addition, stormwater management. And then the last one was the, what was this? Uh, Shadler Yescow Distribution is a building addition for stormwater management. Uh, Manager Trafca and I have been working hard trying to clean up some old files and, and clean up the finance security. So if I, you have any questions, I'll feel free to try to answer them for you.
Under discussion piece, if I can go, Madam President, I'd just like to say, um, Manager Folsom and, and Zach, um, you know, you've been working diligently for these old escrows and, um, excuse me, what, what did I say? Folsom, yeah, I'm sorry, apologize. Uh, Manager, uh, Trafca. Um, you've been working diligently hard at, at clearing up these old escrows and some of them are extensively long. Um, just keep up the good work and keep doing what you're doing and cleaning those up. We really do appreciate it. And not only that, it frees up the finance director's hands from actually having to monitor these accounts and, and close out the bank accounts that deal with these escrows. So good job, guys.
Thank you. Shouldn't have let you go first. That's what I was gonna say to you, but it's nice to see all of these getting off the books. So thank you to the both of you. Do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're up to item eleven, reassignment of special purpose parking.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, Lieutenant Milstein, I'm gonna put you on the spot, just for a brief explanation for the public.
Sure. Good evening. Um, basically, this was already brought up in part. Earlier this year, there was a handicap parking space assigned. That person no longer needed it. We had some information that a new resident might be moving into that home, so we removed the handicap parking sign, left the pole, and this is just reissuing that space to a new person that's residing in that home.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any discussion? Or any questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's gonna be Resolution R dash twenty twenty-five dash forty. We're up to item twelve, appointments to boards and commissions. Yes. I, it is forty-two. Is that not what I said?
Yeah.
It's forty-two. That's what I have written. Yep. Yep. All right, um, we don't have any opens on, openings on any boards. We're gonna move to item thirteen, visitors requesting comments. You can come forward, state your name and address, and you may begin your comments.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I'm Ed Heinz, seven ten Winding Lane. I'm here tonight to address to the board about traffic issue in relation with Quarter Lane. Quarter Lane is a public road running north and south, intersecting to Route four forty-one. This is the road leading to the, um, on for Orange Town's Bank and lower parking annex for, um, for the High Point Shopping Center. This, um, since there was signage posted on the property of the High Point Shopping Center uh, for no unintended or overnight parking of vehicles, tractor trailers started to migrate to Quarter Lane. Um, why? I can only assume because it's free parking. They don't have to go to a yard, a truck yard to park overnight and pay whatever fees. This has caused a few vehicle safety issues. Now, on, now the Winding Oaks, Winding Oaks Townhouse Community, which is on the other side of this, um, road, they have a hundred and seventeen homes. Each home has an average of two cars per household, meaning there's two hundred and thirty-four vehicles utilizing this road. Along with UPS, FedEx, Postal Service, and other delivery commercial vehicles that might be servicing the High Point Mall. Coming tonight, there were ten tractor trailers parked alongside the road of this lane, which restricts access of the vehicles. It makes, um, point of sight issues a concern because they're parking close to intersections. And these intersections, according to the Pennsylvania traffic laws, um, a manual, a vehicle manual, if there's a, um, traffic signal or signage, which they have stop signs at these intersections, vehicles cannot park within thirty feet of that intersection. They are parking closer to this, so we have to come out, um, for line of sight into the other lane. Plus, Quarter Lane has a yellow marking down the center for separation of vehicles. With the tractor trailers parked alongside this road, the one lane, you're always into a third of the other lane. There's, there's no way around it. There's, um, nothing you can do. There, um, so a line of sight coming out of the intersections is a problem. Also, there's a, uh, there's a bend in that road up by Orange Town Bank, um, on to the entrance and, um, exit of the first, uh, of the north side of the, uh, um, of the, uh, community, townhouse community. There's tractor trailers parked on that curb, so the car is coming around. You know, coming up, you can't see what's coming around that bend and you're already over the other lane. It's a, it's, it's, it's problems. It's very, it's a lot of problems. Um, and we see it. We have talked to the, um, Police Department about it. Police Department is, said basically it was a, um, it was a commercial road and trucks parked in there, they couldn't do too much about, um, with it. The only thing they could do is find if a trailer was without a, without a tractor attached to it. That is illegal and they can't do that and they can be fined. Other than, um, coming to the board of commissioners and asking for considerations of parking on this road would be the only other way around it. So what I'm looking for, I mean, I even talked about even a consideration of what happens in the winter time with plowing because that restricts the plow of hitting these roads too properly. So it all comes down to probably one or two options that I can foresee that I would wish the board had taken consideration. One is just to make it non-parking, you know? Yay, you know, that'd be great. Either that or have parking, no parking signs posted within the boundaries of, of regulations. Thirty feet from intersections, both ways, um, around that bend, you know? Not parking anywhere where they can't see line of sight to get problems. Um, I have given Tom, you know, documentation on the, um, vehicle, um, there are pictures, stuff like that, circles, arrows, all that shit. Sorry. Um, so, so, so the, the other thing would be, uh, if they, if there's, if it's not taken up to say no parking, um, to maybe make the signage out there to do. But if they do the signage for the no parking, you gotta move that line, you know, to the yellow line to make it so that, you know, vehicles know which side of the street to go on. So if there's no other, other questions, to me, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and thank you for a consideration.
Yeah, while you're up there, sir, um, I appreciate the email and the pictures, uh, that was forwarded to the Police Superintendent. I believe he assigned, um, Lieutenant Milstein, um, to look at it. And, um, that is a rotating issue in the township. Like, they find a place and they park. Um, you hit the nail on the head. They won't risk parking in that big lot because they'll come back and their truck is gone. So, so they find a place where, you know, they, they think it's out of the way and, um, you know, we're, we'll do a traffic study, we'll, we'll look at it, uh, and, and I think you're, um, you know, at a minimum, uh, they'll need to be where the range is. Uh, but, um, I have a feeling that, you know, th- there may be, uh, a, a bigger, um, issue of having them there. And I think, I think, uh, your, your email and your presentation was, was really good for, uh, explaining it. And, um, we'll, we'll get the traffic study, uh, we have your information, um, we'll keep in touch with you. Um, and then we'll, we'll figure out a course of action. And, um, I don't know, so I can't say that it will be no parking, um, but, uh, it'll be an improvement. And, um, that's, you know.
I'm just looking at the safety issues.
I don't, I don't, we, we have a lieutenant who's gonna do the traffic study, so I don't wanna really, um, you know, say too much, see what he comes up with the facts and things like that, but, um, I appreciate you reaching out and the, the, the pictures and, and I'm familiar with the area and, and there had been some illegal dumping down that cul-de-sac um, down at the other end. And, um, unfortunately, that's, when, when we see the trucks, then people slip in behind them, they have some cover, then we see the illegal dumping. Um, you know, unfortunately, they, they litter outside of the, the truck sometimes.
Right.
And, uh, we almost always find out that they are not residents of that neighborhood where they're, where they're parking. And, um, it seems like as soon as we, uh, put signage up or we, you know, come up with a remedy, they find another, another place. And sometimes it's in the township and sometimes it's not.
Well, as long as somebody else is wrong, I don't know.
Right. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time? All right, hearing none. We're up to item fourteen, possible stormwater violations for investigation. This is on every agenda for every meeting. All right, not hearing any, so we'll go to commissioners requesting comments, additional business and correspondence. Commissioner Tuckey?
Yeah, um, like I was saying earlier in the meeting, we, we didn't attack anyone. Uh, the information was put out there was not anything that went through us for the campaign. Um, we've been, I've been nothing but respectful with everyone on this board. I haven't changed. The stuff that was stated last meeting, that's not me. And, uh, it's just not right putting stuff like that out there as far as I'm concerned. No one has disrespect for anyone on this board with their family, past history of what happened with their family or anything else. I've never been like that. I'm not going to be like that. I wasn't raised to be that way. All, since I've been on the board, all I've had tried to do was my best, being up here, trying to make sure we understand all the facts with everything that's in front of us and keep the best interest of every resident in this township. I haven't changed. I'm still the same person. Um, so that's what I have to say about all that. I mean, it could be nice if all of us could work together, but it was very clear last week or last meeting that, that it's not going to happen, but still trying to do our best. I hope everyone has a good evening. Thank you for coming now.
Thank you. Commissioner Zubek?
Uh, yes, um, I echo Commissioner Tuckey's comments, but I would also like to just state that, you know, it's, it's getting actually quite tiring of watching the county commissioners' meetings where I think just about every single political opponent of Commissioner Connolly's has been accused of some type of corruption or false accusations, or I don't know too many people that haven't. And I'm tired of the politics. I'm tired of the fact that, you know, you know, I sit and I look to my left and I see all of the mismanagement of the finances in our township and I see between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, a two million dollar deficit with this man right here at the helm. How do you lose two million dollars in one year? And then use the nerve to blame the next board? I'm tired of the finger pointing because you don't wanna look at yourself in the mirror. We have plenty of things to talk about, plenty to do in our township. We have parks, we have roads, we have speeding issues. Oh, I could go on and on about speeding lately. We have so many things that we need to concentrate on. And all people can do is sit up here and go attack their political opponents and, and, you know, put in motion their political vendettas. The, all, all today was about, it was, it was childish. It was sour grapes. You're sore loser. Your handpicked candidate lost. And that's all that was. I sit up here and I try to respond and my microphone gets turned off. People put comments on Facebook and, and comments disappear. People make comments on Facebook and someone mysteriously calls their employer and tells their employer to tell them to stop making comments on Facebook. We live in a draconian township with a draconian board. And people say, oh, she complains, she's, you know. I, I'm sticking up for the residents in this township. I'm sticking up for justice. I'm sticking up for freedom of speech, the real freedom of speech, not the freedom of speech that you wanna make it out to be. Not the freedom of speech only when it benefits you. I'll bet you any money that at some point during my, my visitors requesting comments, the Facebook went out mysteriously. Someone's probably commenting right now that they can't hear me because that's what's going on in our township. A nod here, turn off the microphone. A nod there, the feed goes out. It's a shame. It's a shame that this is what it's come to. And someone has the nerve to sit to my left and say, I could never work with them. Well, you know what? That is so unbecoming, a public servant, let alone a president of a board. To say you could never, well, then you shouldn't be there. If you can't pick up the phone, whether we disagree or not, then you shouldn't be in that position. Because I know that it took everything I had sometimes when I was in that seat to pick up the phone and say, any thoughts on the agenda? And I knew I was going to hear wrath on the end of that phone because it seems like you're very unhappy a lot of the time. But I did it because that was my responsibility and that was for the benefit of the township and the residents in our township. And what do I get for it? I think the residents will decide. I think the residents will see what's going on. I think the residents should look into our township finances. The vehicles that have been purchased without board approval, the hirings without board approval, the firings without board approval. I came in a week ago to ask for, um, proclamations that I was supposed to sign for the students. On the Friday before, or I think the week before, I got a message from the chief of staff, which we hired without board approval, that we were supposed to come in and sign documents no later than Tuesday. I said I'll be in on Fri- Friday to sign them. I got an email earlier that week and by Friday, she was no longer employed with our township. No one told me that. I had to find out on my own, coming in and her not being there, and then everybody was going around looking for what I was supposed to sign. I'm a commissioner on this board. I deserve to know what's going on, just like you or anybody else sitting up here. And when I ask for financial information, I should get it. When I ask who we're hiring and firing, I should know. Your responsibility, Commissioner Ellis, President Ellis, is to make sure that we all know what's going on. And you have failed in your responsibility and you have failed the residents of our township. Because we're not providing good services. We're not providing a, an experience for them to come and know what's going on in their township with reasonable people up here, talking and being civil. And we have rogue commissioners going all over the place, speaking for you. Does your dad speak for you at the county meetings? Is this how you want to run your board?
I'm a grown woman, I speak for myself.
Well, then you should show up and speak too.
I have nothing.
But I have, I look forward, I look forward to the opportunity to answer questions. I've done everything within a confines of the law. I know that you haven't. I know that all of you up here are corrupt, except for Commissioner Tuckey and myself. I know the three of you are using our sewer authority to subsidize your egregious financial management of this township. $2 million that we had to cover when we had the majority on the board. We had to cut that deficit in half. We did everything we possibly could. You and your father were in charge.
No.
You can sit up there and shake your head and say, no, I have the charge too and I have the documentation, if you'd like to see it.
I would.
But it's the truth. And it's in that report that you had our PFM show up, it's in the report that you used COVID money, federal COVID money, to mask your financial mismanagement. People deserve real leadership. And you can sit up there and you can respond, I thought we were supposed to not respond when other people are talking, but I guess that's only for the two of us on the end. But the truth of the matter is, if you want to look at corruption, look in the mirror, look at the three people sitting to my immediate left. And you know what? It's going to catch up to you. When people start, we have people, we have more people in this audience tonight than I have seen in a very long time. People are paying attention, residents are paying attention. And you know what? They will make the decision, not you. Thank you. I have nothing further this evening and are, are you speaking to me or can I finish?
Please.
Thank you. Nothing further this evening and I hope everyone has a safe trip home.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, um, I want to touch on some events, uh, that the, uh, police, fire and our fire police, um, were involved in just last weekend. Um, we had forty-three police shifts on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, we, we kind of enhanced that because of some of the events. We had thirty-five of our firefighters and ten fire police take part in activities ranging from, uh, end of school year celebrations at, uh, Paxton Elementary, Chambers Hill and Rutherford, uh, all very crowded, well-attended events. Um, we had over nine hundred bike riders cross through Swatara Township on their, um, loop around the Green Belt. Um, Swatara Township hosts a rest area, we supply a, uh, a bathroom facility, um, and uh, Corporal Poe Crop that handles community events, sets up a tent, he has refreshments, um, and a, a good portion of the riders, um, do stop there. Um, there's different rest stops along the twenty-mile loop. But uh, our fire police were the big stars of the day. Um, they get, uh, people across, uh, from the trailhead near the Five Cents Gardens, over to the Five Cents Garden, then at Thirty-second and, uh, Paxton Street and on Dairy Street, uh, near the Cityline Diner. It was noticeable this year that the traffic was heavier because the Twenty-Ninth Street Bridge is out. Um, while I was going from place to place, uh, on the Torture Belt, I noticed that the decking is done, um, and we're closer to seeing that, um, opening, uh, than we are from, from when it closed. So they're, they're really moving along there. But, um, nine hundred bike riders made it through the township safely. At the same time this was going on, a, uh, local church was doing a baptism in the water at the Five Cents Garden. Over two hundred people attended that, there was no conflict, everybody was, uh, sharing the trail at the same time. And I want to say, um, I was fortunate to get to, to all of those events, um, and that's just this weekend, there, there were other events, um, and we had two Memorial Day, uh, events in the township, uh, one at the Rutherford Circle, uh, and one at the Midland Cemetery. But when I'm out there, uh, this weekend, I, I literally saw twenty-five hundred, three thousand residents of Swatara Township. And what they see is a well-run township. They see police and fire, uh, in the middle of the three schools that were all either ten to one or ten to two, where we had fire personnel and police assigned. Um, we had a fire at the Applebee's, so they broke away from their assignment, firefighters went and put out the fire, the police responded, the fire police did what they needed to do, and then, and then they went back and served the public. So I, I think, um, we, we hear a lot of, um, gloom and doom and, uh, the fact of the matter is, the three in the middle are Democrats. This is the first time in 2024 that three Democrats in an election in this township won all three seats. I served on this board years ago when there were nine members and the other eight were Republicans. And I was elected back then after a Republican majority raised taxes five years in a row. Since I have been here, going back to two thousand and fourteen, there has not been a single tax increase in Swatara Township. So the things you hear, going back to the old way and having extra jobs and paying people, they're not the efficient way. I will stand by the fact that we are going to be efficient, we're going to use tax dollars wisely. It will hurt some people's feelings and then they will conjure up all these things around the edges. But we're making improvements to the building, we're upgrading parks in the township. The population of this township in the 2020 census went up nineteen point one percent. It is the fastest-growing population township in Dauphin County. Uh, we're working with the school district to get a full-day kindergarten up here at the AppSumy Building that was vacant. Um, you see the roads being fixed, some in, in coordination with, with Pendot, some, some with other agency help. But Swatara Township is, is moving forward in a good place. And if we want to hear about all the bad things and, and all the problems, that's fine. But, um, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for the residents every time, even the residents that are unhappy that we're here. Um, and, uh, you know, for, for a lifetime, for, for hundreds of years, I don't know how many hundreds, the board was controlled by the other party. And ironically, I feel like I'm one of the most conservative, fiscally responsible people on this board. And he's saying, oh God, but he loves the fact that the taxes are low here. You can look in all the directions around us and see what you pay on, on the milled sheet. The staff does a great job, our police, our firefighters, they're dedicated. What has happened over the years here in Swatara Township, in Harrisburg and other communities, uh, Siskiyou, Hannah, Lower Paxton, is that there's not that many volunteer firefighters. So we moved to paying part-time firefighters so we'd have a guaranteed response. Um, years ago, there were multiple fire stations that, that are not in service now. But we have two that have been up and running, Rutherford and the Swatara Station, that provide a response, uh, at, at an incredibly high rate at volunteer and we're switching over to paid because you deserve it. And while we're paying those firefighters and we're upgrading our equipment and we're doing a great job, we didn't raise your taxes. And I live in the same world as you. I go to the grocery store, I get my utility bills, prices are going up and here we're fighting for you every time. All five of us are on the board, we all should get the credit, we all should get the blame. But when we're constantly voting three-two on personalities and we're not looking out for, for the, the votes that, that benefit the residents, I, I think that's a problem, but I can't control that. I only control myself. Um, I, I do want to say that, uh, we've had, um, multiple, um, graduation events, uh, we assisted at, uh, Steel High, and for those of you that don't know this, probably most people do, every single student in public school in Steelton or High Spire attends their school day in Swatara Township. Those are our kids, we police them, we provide fire service, um, and we consider them ours, so we, we support them. But I also want to shout out to, uh, both Bishop McDevitt, C.D. East and, uh, East High in the Central Dauphin School District where our families attend. I saw a lot, a lot of great pictures and I had the, the opportunity to attend, um, some of those events. And we're seeing, um, in the elementary schools, end of year service, tremendous crowds, parents coming out, grandparents, family, friends, teachers, all enjoying life here in, in Swatara Township as we make improvements. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna respond to the, you know, this happened, that happened. I, I know what I did, it's pretty much an open book, the minutes are online, you can, you can look at the records. Uh, I, I don't, I don't regret a decision. Um, we have some upcoming events. Uh, this Saturday will be the first movie night. Uh, it's an outdoor event at Ivory Bridge Park. The weather looks a little questionable, I did reach out to the company that does the movies and, um, depending on the weather, we still want to do the event, we may move it in, into the building, um, downstairs, but at, for now, it's still posted outside. Um, we'll have a coffee with the cop, I'll let the, the chief announce that next week, there's a coffee with the cop coming up, um, the middle of the month. We will be having some Juneteenth activities, which will include a pop-up picnic-style barbecue at the park at, uh, Conestoga off Harrisburg Street. It's a county, um, property in Swatara Township, we revitalized it with a young man who was just named recently to be the head coach at, uh, uh, Central Penn College, Kenton Austin. Um, we have, uh, a meet and greet pop-up barbecue, that's on the eighteenth. Um, we have a pop-up meet and greet barbecue the next day on the nineteenth, which is a lunch. At Hoy and Latchaw Tower, um, it was a yearly event, we, we may have missed a, a COVID year. But, um, this year, uh, members from Swatara Fire Rescue will be bringing, um, Rutherford Fire Company's trailer and cooking, um, at the two locations on the eighteenth in the evening, nineteenth during the day, even though they're in specific areas of the township, everybody's invited and they will rotate, um, through the warm weather months so that every area of the township, um, will, will have an event. And, um, we're also working with Barbara Barksdale at the Midland Cemetery, Historic Midland Cemetery, um, to have, uh, some either self-directed tours with a map and some information or possibly some members of the, uh, uh, Midland, uh, Friends of Midland, um, may do, may be able to do some guided tours. I believe, um, Ms. Barbara Barksdale will be out of town, um, on, on that day. Um, but as, as far as, um, the negatives, when, when I'm not here, I speak at lots of meetings. Commissioner Tuckey had mentioned some problems with sewer and I think Commissioner Zubek mentioned some problems with sewer. Not on the sewer board. Sewer board met Monday night, there was one person in the audience. So if you have concerns, you go to those meetings, if you want to go to Dauphin County Commissioners' Meeting or an Election Board Meeting, you go to the meetings. I don't know that you get to tell other people what they say at the meetings or whether you agree with it or not. Um, but I attended the sewer board meeting and I sat in the back and I was the only person here. And in all honesty, I was here to work with, uh, Commissioner Ellis on putting flyers together for twenty-seven hundred students in this township in the evening, no pay, after, you know, just, just trying to do the right thing for our citizens. So I understand some people are angry and they're going to be angry no matter what we do. Um, that's, that's fine, I will still do my best and I will do my best to work with this board. But I want to be clear, I will counter misinformation, um, stories about the past, all those things. The ones we heard tonight were just the repeated ones, so there really was nothing new, um, or valid. Uh, but, but you can, you can look at your tax bill and you can judge if we're doing a good job or we're not. Um, and since two thousand and fourteen and I was on the board all those years with exception to, um, we haven't raised taxes, we did lower taxes one year by a small amount. And compare that to anything else you pay. And, um, you know, judge us by that and the results. And we, like I said, we have incredible police, fire, you want to attack me, that's fine. But the, the township is in a good place and is doing a good job. And I appreciate everybody that listens to that long-winded, uh, comment. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Vice President Steele?
Yeah, I appreciate everybody that logged on and, and, and everyone that came out and, and enjoyed somewhat what they could of the evening with us. I'm just going to be very, very brief on some of the things that were said because I, I, again, meeting after meeting, month after month, we continue to come out here with theatrics and at, at some point, as I keep saying, we got to get back to, uh, governance. Um, you, you can say you're not involved, but your flyers say something different that you were involved and you have all these accolades and the things that you did and the great things that you did for the community, but then you come up here and say you're not involved. At some point, you got to decide whether you were involved or whether you were not involved. But I will tell you this, there are a lot of things that you weren't involved because you're not engaged. And everything from January second, twenty twenty-four, you haven't been involved because you yourself haven't been engaged in the process. Or when it comes to the process and it hits the agenda, you just decide you're just going to vote no, just because of the theatrics of your party or to appeal to your base. Um, things that make sense, you just totally vote no. Um, you're so engaged and, and I'll defer my time if you can tell me what we pay on a quarterly basis as a budget. Or even what twenty twenty-five's budget is this year, if either one of you can tell me actually what it is, I'll defer my time to you. If you can actually tell what this township spends on a quarterly basis, uh, of our finances, since we're not doing the right thing, I'll give you the mic, I'll defer my time to you right now.
Well, maybe you could tell everybody how much you get paid as taxpayer money and how much we paid on your accidents that you've had over the last year.
That's what I thought, I thought we couldn't do that. So I, I'll do it for you, Evan, eighteen point five million dollar budget.
How many accidents, how many vehicles?
I didn't interrupt you, please don't interrupt me.
Well, you just gave me your time.
We spend about, I asked you a question, you didn't give it. Uh, we spent about four point five million dollars a quarter, payroll's anywhere between three hundred and twenty-five thousand every two weeks to four twenty-five, depending on if we have payouts or anything. So there's your answer. They can't answer because they don't know.
So I guess it was theatrics when you gave me your time and took that.
They don't know because they don't pay attention. That's the problem. But we, but we will continue to come out here, day in and day out, and, and say that you're not involved, you're not involved because you only come to a meeting on a Wednesday. You don't ask staff for information, you don't, you don't request information, you don't want to be involved in the committee meetings, we don't know what's going on with your committee and you don't want to be involved in any other committee meeting. And I understand that, we all have families, we have lives, so if you don't want to be involved, that's fine, but you're not involving yourself. It's not that we're not allowing you to be involved in the process, you can always be involved in the process, but even when it comes out front, you have to understand that no matter what we agree on or disagree on, the majority rules at the end of the day. That's the democratic process. And you know what? You might not like it, but that's what it is. And that's why the people elect people to vote and come up here and represent them. Um, so, so that's, that's where I'm perplexed. Now let's talk about the chief of staff. Um, the chief of staff, actually the primary employer was sewer. And I would resign too if I was her, if, um, from the podium you did this in public. You, you, you told the public that she was riding around in Tahoe joyriding. You told, you told the public and you questioned staff in here whether or not she was my family member and then you went and told the public.
Absolutely not.
Then you went and told the public that we hired a family member and gave him a high salary.
Absolutely not, you're a liar.
You, you consistently drag her through the mud up here, she's unqualified, you didn't see her resume, why did we hire her?
Well, I did say I didn't see her resume.
I, I will tell you this, your mendacious character is, is something that's appalling. So, so what I'm going to ask you to do is begin to bring us something of substance. And, and what I mean, something that we can work with, policy, legislation. If you don't like the budget, bring us something to have at the budget meeting where we can change the processes. I'm extending that to you. Send me an email, anything having to do with the personnel committee or the finance committee, if you- the personnel committee or the finance committee. If you want to sit down and meet, I'm willing to sit down and meet and hear your ideas, which I've said since January 2nd, 2024.
Well, you know what? Everybody knows it's just theatrics out here. You don't really want to meet.
We do understand that doesn't happen because at the end of the day, the most important thing is, critical thinking requires effort. And you can't give no effort, neither one of you. And that's the problem. Because you can't critically think to change the things that need to be changed. And I'll say again, we can say it's the worst governance ever since and this and that. But again, we were dealt a two-plus million dollar deficit. And in one year, in one year, we shaved off almost $3 million in debt off of this local municipal government. In one year, $3 million. And we're on target to do another $3 million this year. So we're doing the right things. Our staff is doing the right things. Our staff is looking into the right things to reduce our budget and actually be fiscal responsible. If you would ask the staff what they're doing, they'll tell you. They have their projects and they're working hard. So for you to come up here and berate us, you're berating the staff too because there's some initiatives that they're working on to make sure this local government continues to operate with fiscal responsibility. And that's disingenuous to our staff. But it is what it is. I'll tell you this, I'm going to close out because this is probably going to be a record-breaker meeting for us. So I thank you again, everyone that logged on and everyone that came out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to speak. I'm going to speak. And if you do interrupt, then I will have the microphones turned off.
Go ahead. You do it every week anyway.
So for my comments this evening, I just want to reiterate that Saturday is the movie night. This is our first. We will have another one in September. Shortly, within the next few days, we'll get a list of all of the other events that will be taking place over the summer on the, the website and the Facebook page. They probably already are listed in some capacity on the calendar that's on the website. So we'll start promoting. We have quite a few events that will take place this summer. For the movie night, if we do end up having it outdoors, the movie that's going to be showing is Moana 2. Generally start at dusk when, when it's an outdoor movie. If we do have it outdoors, please remember to bring a blanket and chairs so that you can enjoy the movie and not have to sit in the grass. And the only other thing that I wanted to address was, there were comments made by Commissioners Zubek regarding the PFM presentation that was done for financial conditions of the township. If you go to our website and you search PFM, the documents are available. You can inspect them. You can read through them. There is information about the ARPA funds. And it specifically says that the only years that the township wasn't able to produce documentation showing what the ARPA funds were used for was 2022. Commissioner Zubek was president at that time and finance chair. So again, that's online. Go read it. Go look it up. And then, again, with regard to the custody case information that was sent out in a flyer for politics, I said this last month, and I'll say it again, that timeframe that they referred to and misrepresented refers to the beginning of the end of my brother's life, passed away in 2020 from a heroin overdose. 2010, the information that they cited on that flyer, there was a custody battle and it marked the beginning of his heroin use. So struggled with heroin use for 10 years. These two on the ends chose to use that on a political flyer against someone that is not me, not Commissioner Connolly, who, again, if this is a surprise to anyone, I'm not sure why it would be. Commissioner Connolly is my father. That was sent out to thousands of Republicans in this township. And I am not going to stand for disrespect of my brother. I was a fierce defender of him when he was alive and I will continue to be so now that he's gone. So with that, I'm going to end because, try to keep my composure. I will say though, that I'm responsible for my behavior up here. And again, if, if you attack my brother, I'm going to respond. I didn't get to in 2021 when they sent it out the first time. I didn't do it publicly and I had regret that I didn't. And I'm saddened that I had the opportunity again. I hoped that that would be the only time that that information was used. I have the court custody documents here and I provided a copy to Commissioner Tuckey. I'm going to provide a copy to Commissioner Zubek. And what I would ask of the two of you is that you take time to read it so you can understand the outrage that I have. And you can understand the struggles that my brother was going through, that my father was fighting with, with Jordan's mother, which at this point, everyone gets along well, have a good relationship with Jordan's mother, love her. She was struggling as well at that time. So there is no hard feelings or anything like that with the things that were written. But the information they put on there was misrepresented. And it was misrepresented in a way to make it seem like domestic violence, which is also an issue because that cheapens and disrespects anyone that was subjected to domestic violence. It was a trashy thing to do. I said it last week. I said it in 2021. I'll say it again now. I'll continue to say it as long as these, you continue to deny that they had anything to do with it. It was paid for by the Dauphin County Leadership PAC. If you go to their campaign page right now, you go to a post from, I believe it was May 19th, there is a piece of information that also went out on their behalf to Republicans in the primary that is from the same PAC. And they're touting it, saying that, look at the, the great thing that these people said about us. You don't get to say that this letter was in support of us and for us and the other ones not when it comes from the same PAC. So with that, I thank everyone that came out this evening. I do apologize to the people that watch this. This, this was not my best meeting. But again, this is personal. And you disrespect my brother. It's personal. And I will act accordingly. I hope that the commissioners will take the time to read it so that they can have an understanding. And for a person of integrity, if you learn that something like that went out on your behalf and you see how vile it was, a person of integrity would make a public statement and say, that is not something that represents my values and my beliefs. That's what should happen. We'll see if it does. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. The meeting is adjourned at 8:25.